Okay, it's four o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Ms. Sanderson is joining us remotely. Our first order of business will be our invocation, and that will be done by Dr. Graham McKnight.
All right, let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we pray for your guidance. We seek your counsel on decisions that will impact educational outcomes for our students. We ask that our actions in this meeting reflect your will and your vision for the children of Granville County. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would you like to give our pledge of allegiance for Ms. Graham?
Sure.
Everybody's hand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The next item on the agenda is report from Chair. I'd like to give you a brief update on the North Carolina School Board Association Conference that Mr. Peace and myself attended in Greensboro this past week, and Dr. McLean was able to join us on Tuesday. There were three general sessions, the first of which featured Dr. James Johnson, Jr., Professor of Strategy and Entrepreneurship and Director of the Urban Investment Strategy Center at UNC Chapel Hill. He shared a great deal of population data that has been collected and analyzed as to the population trends in the United States, and more specifically, North Carolina. The growth in population for the past few years has been primarily in the South. Five states have accounted for 79% of the growth in the U.S. population. Those states are Texas, Florida, Virginia, North Carolina, and Georgia. And North Carolina is number three in that list. He also talked about the majority of the population growth in our state now and in the coming years is due to migration from other states and from immigration. He talked about some of the major challenges this presents. One is to education itself with the decline in those entering the teaching profession. Another is available and affordable housing for those moving into the area, and especially for teachers. Another challenge is adequate daycare and preschool. Another is providing Internet services for rural areas of North Carolina. And of course, we realized that quite abundantly when we were in the pandemic. He thinks that having friendly HR policies are a must. And he spoke to how people being out of work has led to many people losing income, which has resulted in more mental health issues. Even though North Carolina is growing and will continue to grow, the growth is not spread evenly throughout the state. Many of the more rural counties are not experiencing growth but decreases in population. The growth is centered mainly in the Triangle, the Triad, and the Charlotte Mecklenburg area. And counties that are adjacent to those areas will feel the spillover effect, and we are one of those counties. Interestingly, the population growth continued in spite of the pandemic in our state. Another statistic he shared was that during the pandemic, 550,000 children were orphaned. The population of the country in our state will become much more diverse, and we will need to be prepared for the coming changes that will affect education in our state. He really did give a wonderful presentation, showed us many graphs, and I hope I'll be able to get some of those and share with you at some point. One of the breakout sessions I attended was about the needs-based grants and how the lottery money in North Carolina is being distributed. The feeling of the DPI representative and the lottery rep was that this program for new schools renovations and repairs to existing schools will be a continuing program. Let's keep our fingers crossed that it will be. In addition to salary, I found out another section I went to was about retaining teachers. And in addition to salary, other major factors their surveys have shown is that applicants are very interested in location of the school, the school culture, and support system from their administrators. The next thing I wanted to share with you was about the delegate assembly that Mr. Peace and I attended. The legislative agenda that our North Carolina School Board Association presented was voted on after several amendments and additions. It was a very vocal group of people, though. As soon as I get a copy of all the items that were added and changed, I'll get everyone a copy. But a couple of them I would like to share with you. One of the items was requesting that funds be allocated to support an SRO in every school. And another one is to allow flexibility for each LEA to set their own school calendar according to what would be best for their students. And right now, there is discussion by the Legislative Committee studying North Carolina education about passing a law requiring that school systems have to start after Labor Day and end by Memorial Day, which is in direct opposition to what most school systems have wanted for a long time, which is more flexibility, just as the charter schools have. This change would be even more restrictive than what we have now should it become law. And I think that's something we really do need to follow and see how it goes. The final general session featured a presentation from the North Carolina Teacher of the Year, Leah Carper. She was absolutely wonderful. She talked about what teachers are experiencing in their schools and how important it is for us to support our teachers. She also talked about the importance of knowing your students and building relationships with them. She credited her success in life to the educators and staff that believed in her. It was really easy to see why she was North Carolina's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Peace, you have anything you want to add from your sessions?
Well, I didn't come prepared to make a presentation on the things that I attended, but I will do that in the next meeting.
Okay.
I attended several sessions that was interesting, but I had made some notes, but I left them on, but I'll bring it next time because...
That sounds fine. Our next item on the agenda is to hear from our superintendent, Dr. McLean.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good afternoon, everyone, to our board members, our listening audience. Good afternoon to each of you. I too enjoyed this year's North Carolina School Boards Association meeting. It was most informative for school board members and superintendents. I will not repeat much of what Mrs. Williams has shared, but it was, in fact, most informative. I was also thrilled with some of the awards we brought home from the conference. And we will be showcasing those awards at our December 5th meeting. Granville County was certainly well-represented this year at the state level. I have just a few announcements this afternoon. First, if you look in your folders, board members, you see an invite that will be going to county commissioners. It's already gone. Thank you for that, Ms. Shade. This is something we did a couple of years ago, and you requested that we do this again. So we're excited about that. That will take place on the 14th, and that will be at our central office. So we're thrilled about that. I'm also excited to share with you this afternoon that the bulk of your agenda is focused on kicking off common information, kicking off with common information, because we've had so many board members sort of come on at different times. We thought that this meeting would be used to ensure everyone has all of the same information as you begin to take off, as you look at the redistricting conversation. So we have guests with us, and I'll say good afternoon to each of you, and thank you for being here. You have an academic component that does need action this afternoon. And then we have an air quality report before our staff attempts to make sure everyone has what they need for a conversation this evening. And that, again, is just to ensure everyone has what they need. Of course, the staff has no part of the copy, decisions made, but we do want to make sure you have good, timely, updated information. This concludes my report this evening, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. I'd like to add to that that I know you've all had opportunity to review the information in your board docs. And this additional information that we're going to hear today hopefully will help us move forward. And we'll be able to ask questions, and we may think of other questions based on answers we received today. And I would ask if you have any specific plans that you hold on to them until our next discussion, because I think it's going to take us a while to digest what we hear from the people that are joining us today. Our next item is the academic, district academic achievement plan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so very much. Dr. Winborn will share with you what we have for you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McLean, and good afternoon, board members. Good to see you all here today. This afternoon, I bring to you, once again, our district academic achievement plan. I first introduced this to you back in the spring as a draft. The framework for it was set after a lot of feedback and hard work on the part of the academic team. We've also been working closely with our school leaders on this effort as well. You saw it once again during the summer, and then again, just, I believe it was the previous work session in October. And so I bring it to you tonight as a final draft for your approval. It will then be submitted to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. The format will look a little different, but the content is exactly the same. It will be uploaded to them via the NCSTAR platform. And we will then certify that it's been approved by our local Board of Education and submit to them by the 9th of December. So I'm happy to take any questions tonight or talk about it if you'd like to open it up for discussion. But I am requesting that it is approved as presented.
Any questions? Any discussion? Do I hear a motion from the floor that we approve this plan?
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
All right. The motion has been made by Mr. Peace, seconded by Dr. McKnight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we are unanimously voting for your plan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn.
Our next section of the agenda, we will be hearing from some people that will give us some, hopefully, helpful information going forward. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I am so happy to present these folks, at long last, coming to share information with you. Dr. McLean has been working on this for months and months. The issue has been that our boards meet at the same time. So there's been a lot of difficulty. And originally, we thought it would be best that the information be presented at a board meeting. The more frustration that occurred, finally, we arrived at the conclusion that we should just have this presentation during work sessions. So I am thrilled to bring to you representatives from the city of Oxford, from the town of Butler, and from the county. And so we're going to start out. These folks are with the planning departments, and they are going to present some information on future growth. And so I'd like to begin with Cheryl Hart, if you don't mind, Cheryl. And Cheryl is with the City of Oxford Planning Department.
And since you're an unofficial assistant, I know that you can't be here. And the mayor is jealous that she couldn't be here. She's out of town.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you're a great assistant, by the way. So again, thank you for allowing me to share what's going on within the city of Oxford. We like to say that great things are happening. If you all may know, our current population is roughly 8,800 people. And I remember the mayor coming here, possibly in 2018, to talk about some growth. And at the time that she talked about growth, it was just really what we had talked about with developers, but it hadn't been a whole lot of movement. And since that time, I'd like to go over what has taken place since when she presented projected growth roughly around 2018 until today. So on the map that we have, the development opportunities map, I know Mr. Graham emailed me, and he said, "Is that right? Is that a true document?" And I said, "Yes, sir. They're real numbers." So again, thank you for inviting me to talk about what's been going on in Oxford. What you have in blue, those are developments. If you were to ride by there, you can actually see streets. Some of the streets are already paved, and they're near ready to pull a permit, which probably permits to be pulled the first of the year. Those are the Hatcher Creek Plan Unit Development. And you see on there how many acres and how many single families. I know when the mayor first came, we had thought that it was going to be roughly 85 single-family dwellings. That number has decreased to 27 units. And you still have 110 townhomes, 288 apartment units. Also, with the Meadows, you see 302 single-family dwellings. And with the Abbey Meadows, you see 85 single-family and 36 townhomes. So in construction, we're talking about an increase of 853 units. And that population is roughly 1962, which we came up with at 2.3 persons per dwelling unit. And next on the map, you see things highlighted in green. And on the handout, we have on there approval phase. And we've done just that. These developments have been approved, and we're now going over the construction drawings. You have 288 townhomes under Crews Pond. Right across the road from that, you have 336 single-family dwelling units. And the Thorne Dell Village was just recently, and it's, although you have 182 units, that's actually 150 units. So again, we're talking about a population roughly of 1,854. Those two have been approved. And also on here, you see everything else in orange. And those are the developments. They're more in the talking phase, but I'd like to point out the Oxford Park subdivision or Plan Unit Development. That was approved back in 2002. And so we're, you know what year this is. And we have, I'm going to say, roughly 300 homes. So I was telling Mr. Graham that I'm going to have to put my waiver out that I'm not psychic and can tell you when the houses will be developed or, you know, how the economy is going to shake with it. But again, those are 451 remaining acres to be developed, along with all the other units that you see or parcels that you see in orange. And I think the only other thing we have is green, which, I think I've shared with you, that's approved. And one thing, I think, we did show on the map the Havens Apartments, which you have 60 units. That is for seniors, so you probably won't provide any kind of educational activities for them. But again, we like to say that great things are happening in Oxford, because up until then, we've not been able to talk about growth in Oxford. So hopefully, we would like to see that happen. And we're just thrilled that you all are going to be providing the educational opportunities for our children. Are there any questions?
Ms. Hart, on these subdivisions, the large ones, I think, the one there on 96 in blue, and some of these others, can you tell us what type of homes we're looking at? Are we looking at primarily starter homes? Or are we looking at homes that are in the really high price range?
What do you call high price range?
I'd say, well, it changes from month to month these days, but I would say the starter homes would probably be, at this point, about probably $350 and below.
I think they would be in that price range.
Most of them.
Based on the conversations we've had with developers. And that's strange to hear that price as a starter home.
Yeah. $250,000 is right. $250 to $300 is probably about what most people now would want for a starter home for family.
We hope they can get it built for that. Yes, ma'am. Are there any other questions?
Yes, I'm curious. Do you know approximately what the average is for, like, this orange section where it's all proposed? The average between, like, you know, just up for discussion versus actually continue through completion?
To be honest, I think that's going to depend on the economy.
But I mean, do you have any, like, prior? I mean, you don't have any of that, like, previous averages, like, for other developments that have been completed?
I do not. And again, up until now, we've really not been privy to having this type of conversation of development. So we're excited to even be talking to people about it. But I don't have any projections for that.
Thank you.
Is there a certain type of, the size of lot that's been required to place a house on here in Granville County outside? Half acre, acre? What's going to be the lot size?
Usually, we're talking about a lot. We're really now looking at very small lots, 50-foot in width lots. I mean, I think the days of having lots developed where you have 100 feet in width, I think those days are pretty much over, unless you go to a different type of subdivision. But everything that's being proposed are 50 to 60-foot lots. Small in size.
For some of the, I guess, these plots on the outskirts, the orange areas that are being proposed, do you know if the developers are looking to set aside any type of space for, I don't know, parks, community? What's the infrastructure like? Because I know Internet was a problem for us when everybody was back at home, so...
In our rules and regulations, we require about 17% of open space.
Okay.
So that's required.
Okay. And so far as infrastructure, do you know high-speed Internet or cell towers or anything going out in some of these far-reaching areas?
Well, we hope we have enough cell towers out to serve our people, and it would be underground cable.
Okay.
All right. Again, thank you, and we're looking forward to y'all still providing this service to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hart. Now, I'd like to ask Mike Cerriello to step forward. Did I butcher that?
Thanks. Hi there. I'm Mike Cerriello, the Planning Director and Economic Development Director for the Town of Butler. You're about to get a copy of our long-range land use character area map. As most of you know, Butler is located right at the edge of the county on ID5 with the opening of the I-885 link. You're all familiar with that. It also goes by the name of East End Connector. Butler is 10 minutes from downtown Durham and 15 minutes from the new Apple Campus in the middle of RTP. I mean, it puts us closer to RTP and downtown Durham and Duke and those places than Apex or Holly Springs, and certainly closer than Fuqua Varina. We know the kinds of growth that's happened in those places. So Butler's taken a different approach to how we're looking at our future. Couple of the constraints that we have, we don't have a lot of land. We can't make more land. We can't really grow. We're surrounded by other jurisdictions. We're surrounded by protected state and federal lands, the lake. So the geographic area you see on that map is about as big as Butler will ever be geographically. In fact, it might even be a little smaller than that pretty soon if STEM takes more of our land. We focused on patterned development and quality of life in this plan. A big driver for us is to maximize the use of existing infrastructure. So we're focusing development where we already have infrastructure, i.e. roads, water, sewer, telephone, telecommunications, and, for that matter, schools. But I wanted to mention that I'm glad that we were invited to this. I think it's really important for us to work closely together. Planning for schools is an integral part of what we do, and we need to have these conversations more often. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to see you again after this. Our focus is on density. Again, maximizing the use of the land that we have. Right now, Butler and Creedmore and some of the other places in Granville County are fairly low-density places. And that means that they're not very walkable. And that's another important component about our long-range plan. We estimated, based on the amount of land that we have, both currently occupied by development and that which is not occupied by any development, that we could be adding 8,500 residential units to the Town of Butler in the next 25 to 30 years. That would yield a population of about 40,000 people in Butler. I can't speak for Creedmore or STEM, but I think Creedmore has the potential for something similar. We have on the books right now 1,200 residential units that are in review, if you will, approximately adding 4,000 people to the 9,000 people that are already in Butler. The thing that holds Butler back right now is the availability of sewer. Our sewer system is very old. And so Siquasso, which is the South Grandville Water and Sewer Authority, is working on design and engineering now to improve that, to handle the growth that we anticipate. They expect that work to be finished by 2026. It's our guess that by 2026, if the economy stays pretty much the way that it is, Triangle continues to stay attractive, that all bets are off after that. I mean, we're facing a tremendous pressure for growth. I mean, one of the reasons that we keep hearing, and sort of we knew, that we haven't seen a lot of pressure for growth in Butlers because nobody knew where we were. With the opening of 885, in fact, nobody knows where Granville County is, frankly. So most of the people now that have moved to North Carolina, I saw a statistic that 52% of the people living in North Carolina now are not native North Carolinians. 52%. And in the Triangle, that number's probably higher. And in the Triangle, that number's probably higher. So all the people moving to the Triangle are familiar with their neighborhoods, but, you know, people in their geographic minds don't really think outside of that. And so the world ends at the Durham Freeway for most newcomers. And the lake kind of insulates us as well. But now that people are starting to visit Southern Grandville County, they're getting very excited. One of the factors, I think, that will help us in terms of growth, and certainly to help us become more dense and walkable and more urban in Butler, is that the land, the topography of the land in Southern Grandville County does not lend itself to the kinds of subdivisions that you would see in Johnston County, for example. Johnston County is relatively flat. There's not a lot of riparian corridors. It's relatively easy to develop in Johnston County, which is one of Southern Wake County, are very easy to develop. It's much harder to develop in Grandville County and Southern Person County. What that could potentially mean is that we'll end up with larger houses, or houses that are at a higher price point because of the cost to develop in Southern Grandville County. So that can be a good thing, in the sense that the income in the county would rise, therefore yielding more tax revenues. But on the other hand, it's also going to make housing more expensive, so the affordability question comes into, you know, is raised. I think that's about all I can add at this point, except to, again, say that, you know, with all the growth that is coming, continuing to have these conversations is very important. What we would like to see in Butler are schools that students can walk to. We'd like to see schools that could be integrated into the urban fabric. You know, schools that don't necessarily have to have lots of open space, fields, for example, playgrounds and so forth. I mean, smaller playgrounds, but more urban, so that we can get more housing, let people walk more, easier for access, et cetera. So it might be a different view about the layout of site planning for schools. I know you have constraints on, you know, what you can add, or what can be, what has to go into building new schools, but it's, I would offer that that could be a conversation as well to have, is what is the layout of schools in a more urban context? How do we do that? How do we make that work? Any questions?
The subdivision that's being proposed is off of Ophamango Road?
Lion Station.
Lion Station Road, yeah. Where is that at in the process? Because people keep asking me about it.
Right, sure. It's 900 residential units. It's a big subdivision. It is probably a month away from the Planning Board, which is the first step in approval for this kind of project, and then the next step would be Town Council. We are putting them through a very rigorous review. The town of Butler is very conscious about not, because we don't have a lot of land, we're very conscious about the quality of the projects, and so if Council and Planning Board are not happy with the quality of this project, it won't be built.
Thank you.
So another question that I have is, so you had said that you're estimating in the next 25 to 30 years about 40,000 people? And, okay, just want to make sure I have that right. So then, by math standards, I mean, that looks like it's about 1,400 to 1,600 people per year. Are we anticipating that that's going to be more on the latter end, or more spread out evenly? Or how are you, like, what are you?
Let's just look at the experience in places like Apex or Holly Springs, right? Apex, I've lived here for 32 years. 32 years ago, Apex had 600 people. It's now pushing 60,000. So, you know, it comes in spurts. Sometimes you'll add 2,000 people in a year, and then 800 the next year, or 400, depending on what the economy does. So we can look to see examples in the Triangle, because we've seen this happen before, to towns the size of Butler, or Oxford, or STEM even, where you go from nothing to boom, and it feels uncontrollable. One of our biggest issues is really transportation, Barry. We all sit on the Transportation Planning Boards, and there just is no money available for places like Grandville County to expand our road system, which is another reason why we're focusing development on where we already have roads, how adequate those roads are, and other things. So there are probably going to be things that will put a brake on growth, just roads, for example, would be a big reason why that would happen. There are no plans to widen I-85 north of the 885 interchange on 85 Durham. Has said no widening of 85 north at that point. That's a problem for us. We can already, I now live in Durham, I used to live in Northern Grandville County. Go Toler, sorry, I had to put that out there. But, you know, I see traffic now incrementally in the last four years increasing. There's red lights in the morning and in the afternoon where cars are having to, just the quantity of vehicles.
I was going to say, that one exit, right after you cross over the lake, is just...
Yeah, that's crazy. You can see all the traffic coming in. Most of that traffic is Wake County. Northern Wake County, that's going, that goes north now. It's easier for people to go even to downtown Raleigh from Creedmore using 85 to 885 and then going in, as opposed to 50, which is just traffic light after traffic light, traffic. So there's a tremendous amount of work. I mean, one of the things that we have to do, colleagues, and putting a plug out here for these guys, is to come together to DOT and say, we need 85, we need planning on 85 being widened. You know, short of that, you know, what are we going to do? I mean, mass transit would be awesome, but, and there is a rail line that goes right through all of our towns, but, you know, let's face it, we might not be ready for that. So, you know, the picture that we have to look at is very broad. It covers a lot of factors. And so to answer your question in a very long way, is to say, it's not unfathomable that we could have that level of growth on a yearly basis. It could be quicker, or it could be slower, but the proof is out there in towns around the Triangle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With all of the residential, what looks like residential building is coming, are there any plans, or have you heard anything about additional retail trying to get into the areas?
Yeah, it's a great question. So fundamental about development is that retail follows rooftops, and the quality of retail follows the dollars. So you have to have a combination, so you might get, for example, a Hardee's with a population of 3,000 people, but you'll get a PF Chang's with a population of 3,000 people making $120,000 a year. So it just, those are the equations that these people look at, and we haven't tipped that point yet, but with these kinds of numbers, just the quantity will definitely kick that into gear, and then, again, it'll be exponential after that. And we're running out of, Butler's in an interesting place because we don't have room to grow. So, again, we're focusing on becoming very dense, so a lot of retailers, like, let's say, a drive-thru, there's not going to be much opportunity for that in Butler in the future. It's going to be much more walkable, more Main Street kind of stuff, much more dense, houses above, or residential above, restaurants and shops and that sort of thing. And lots of open space, by the way.
That's a plus.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
So, our last crystal ball gazer, Mary Baker, is going to join us. He's from the Planning Department of the county.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you for having me today. And it's interesting to be the last speaker, hearing folks from the municipalities talk to you about their growth. Talk to you a little bit about what you're seeing in the unincorporated areas of the county. As you're aware, most of the growth that we see in the unincorporated area of the county is in Wilton, generally south of 56. I provided Mr. Graham with some statistics or some subdivisions that have been approved since 2020. Reason that we go to 2020 is those are preliminary plats. In many instances, those approved in 2020 are now final and being built on, but generally, if you get a preliminary plat approved in Grandville, you have two years to get it on the ground and get it planted so that you can start building houses. In that information, you'll find that there have been approved by the county Planning Board 790 homes of interest just this year. Out of that 790, 538 have been approved in 2022. So there's been a tremendous increase in the number of preliminary plats that have come to our Planning Board this year. Many of those lots would be located in the southeastern corner, generally around Bruce Garner Road, with 108 proposed on their December agenda, also on Bruce Garner Road. Of note, and what I talk to our county commissioners about each year at their retreat, generally we have around 75 minor subdivision lots that occur in unincorporated parts of the county. Those are of interest because 75 lots are created in that way, and many times, those are built on very quickly. It may be a family member, it may be one or two lots, and it's hard to pinpoint where they are because it happens all over the county. I've also given you a copy, or two slides from Development Services' presentation to our county commissioners at their retreat this year. Grandville County issues all the building permits in Grandville County, including the You'll see on the slide, the building permit issued by group from 2017 to 2021. Again, we're in 2022, and that information will be coming out in January for 2022. You see that in 2019, there were 706 residential units that received building permits. That was the high point in that five-year period. In 2017, there were 557, increased in 2018, increased again in 2019 at 706, has fallen a little bit in 2020 and 2021. So there are a number of building permits being issued for residential units. Generally, they are site-built homes in the county's zoning jurisdiction, but there are also modulators, double wides, and single wides that are built. Another slide that you'll find are zoning permits by township. Now, this is what our department issues for zoning permits. A zoning permit is the first permit that you obtain when you are wanting to build on your property. This has been consistent, I've been with Grandville County over 19 and a half years. I've made, in all those years, presentations to our county commissioners about where the growth occurs. It's been very consistent anywhere, generally, the range is 65% to 80% of the permits are in the four southernmost townships of the county. That's been consistent for the whole time I've been here. I've been here 19 and a half years. A lot of the growth in unincorporated county, it does happen in the Brassville Township. Again, that's Wilton, generally south of 56. I've heard some information from folks with the municipalities. What the county uses as far as projections are the State Demographers Office, Office of Management and Budget. I looked at the projections for population growth from 2020 to 2021 is roughly 10.1%, which is about 1% estimated growth in the 10-year period that will end in April of As you will recall, what impacted population growth early in this last decade was the Great Recession. The Great Recession did slow growth and population. It has picked up generally from about 2015, and now we are seeing a slight boom in at least what is preliminarily being approved. I would caution that the economy, the national and the worldwide economy, does have a tremendous impact on whether or not this growth will continue at a larger or faster rate, or whether or not it will slow down. There are other constraints in Grandville specifically in regard to water and sewer, in the southern area, plus Falls Lake watershed and stormwater. Towards the end of this decade, there hopefully will be a rewrite of some of the regulations for Phase Two of the Falls Lake rules, but they could be stricter rules that will have some impact on growth in the south. We already have been enforcing for about 10 years the new development rules for Falls Lake Stormwater rules. Those are Phase One. There is a, generally around 2027, absent changes at the legislature or through the rules rewrite process, Phase Two rules will come into effect around 2027. They will be stricter. How would they be stricter? Generally, more stringent nutrient reduction, and also the possibility of density decreases in the number of dwelling units per acre. So those are some constraints. And so I would say that, to be conservative, you look at the State Demographers Office statistics, their estimates, they generally are correct. It is what they do every day during the business week, and maybe during their off-time, too. And so, again, that's the State Demographers Office. You also find census statistics for the last decade on that. I'd be happy to answer anybody's questions. I've heard questions to Planning Directors of Oxford and Butler about open space and recreation. We, the county approved back in June a 10% open space requirement for active recreation. We are in the process of amending our regulations now to where it would be at least 30% of open space requirement for new subdivisions, or at least cluster subdivisions, also known as conservation subdivisions, which is what we're seeing most of the growth this year in. It came from some changes after our comprehensive plan was updated in 2018, but it could be that open space would be 30% of an area to be subdivided, or tracked, with 10% or more of it being active recreation. The county also enacted a $500 per lot recreation fee that would be applicable to any subdivision that was approved after June, and it is patterned after Hornet County. Be used for recreation for areas near new subdivisions. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
In the northern part of Grandville County, we all know that the growth has not been there. Do you attribute a lot of that, other than distance, maybe to Raleigh-Durham, to the lack of internet structure? Because I've heard people say, I'd love to be a certain place, but I don't have service.
I think it's, I think growth occurs, it's location, real estate is location. I think the proximity of the southern part of the county to employment centers of Raleigh and Durham are generally why you will see the growth in the southern part of the county. I don't, I think, anecdotally, some individuals might not move to the north because of some broadband issues up north, especially OKU, but I don't hear that as a broad reason for not having development. not having development generally occur subdivisions up there.
Follow-up question. Rentals, is there a real shortage of property to rent? Are we seeing any people coming in trying to build more apartments?
That would be a good question for the municipalities. We do not, in the unincorporated area, because we don't have a lot of water and sewer, public water and sewer that facilitates multifamily. We don't see that in the county. Oxford, Butner, Creedmore could answer those questions better than I can. I don't see that because we don't have public water and sewer that avails itself to apartment
Thank you.
I'm just curious, that's one hundred and sixty-one other category. What exactly all does other entail under the building permits?
Oh, those are accessory structures like storage buildings at homes, things of that nature.
Thank you.
It may include one or two cell towers and a solar farm, too.
I do find it interesting that while the residential went down in two thousand and twenty-one, the commercial went up, which is kind of...
Hope it picks up even more.
I know. That'd be great.
Similarly to our earlier question, is there a particular threshold for population to attract, I guess, big-box stores, your Home Depot, your Targets, or anything like
My specialty is reviewing what comes to us, it is not the real estate side. That might be for another discussion with Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce. Maybe Mr. Cerello can answer that question.
If you're looking for local retail, like request, example, ten thousand is usually a threshold for small-scale retail. So like Dollar General will come in and do that, for example, but if you're looking at Target, larger, older than twenty-five thousand people in a mall, which is generated by town, so we're kind of far from that. But they also look at that. So Targets, Market Average is smaller than they could be for Walmart, for example. So why do Walmart offer, like, the population is twenty-five thousand? Is there a service area geographically, so many people travel pretty consistently? So if they're drawing a circle around a location, they'll take in a larger area with more population, because people will drive further to Walmart than they could go to the same Kohl's. Kohl's can have a smaller footprint than that, so it varies significantly depending on the specific kind of retail.
On your sheet with the different subdivisions, are most of them what we would consider higher home value or some mid-range? What do you see?
I would say that they are a higher range, more than three fifty that you mentioned. Three hundred and fifty thousand, probably more than that.
And you're saying those are mostly along the Bruce Garner Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Area. Do you know what the average is?
I do not, but it would just be anecdotal. I do not.
Are there any more questions for our panel?
Thanks for having us. Thank you.
We appreciate all of our speakers today. It's very helpful. Thank you so much.
So ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. I'm sure that we will spend more time together.
So Board, one of the things that I was very encouraged to hear, I'm sorry. One of the things I was encouraged to hear was Mr. Cerello mentioned that these conversations are very welcome, and they look forward to more in the future, as do I. So I'll be glad to serve as the ambassador back and forth for you on your behalf.
All right, next on our agenda is the air quality presentation. Mr. Breen.
Yes, Mr. Graham has been working on this. Dr. Winborn has chimed in with him on some, so take it away.
Thank you very much. So Board, I'm here to speak with you about one of your favorite topics, air quality. We had a couple of challenges in the last few weeks at two sites. Air quality has been a priority with Dr. McLean and the Mates Department since her arrival. There's been an emphasis on maintaining high standards for air quality and keeping the community informed. So to that end, that is why I'm here, is to just bring you up to date. This is information only. I'd like to start with Holly. Thank you. It was brought to our attention on thirty-one October. We had two classrooms that were of concern. Couple staff members made us aware that they had a concern in the classroom. We immediately contacted LRC Labs. They are the folks that do our testing for air quality every year, and they came to conduct testing as soon as possible. The initial testing on two November indicated elevated airborne spore counts, but they were in the low moderate range. So there was an elevated count, but it was not in the, it wasn't even moderate or high moderate. It was a low moderate. The recommendation from LRC was to run air scrubbers, clean all surface, replace ceiling tiles, clean the air handler that attached to the HVAC, and then recheck. Additional air sampling was conducted in the two rooms, and we wanted to make sure that we captured more than just what was presented to us. So I asked, "Could you please check down the hallway around the corner?", that type of thing. So that was done by those labs. So the results of that was that visual observations, moisture measurements, and the sample results reflected that of a relatively normal fungal ecology at that point, okay? The same time that that occurred, ladies and gentlemen, we had sort of an accident, an issue at the administrative offices on Delacroix. Thank you. There was a backup from an HVAC unit where the condensation drains. If you are familiar with HVAC units and how they work, you may follow me on this. If not, just nod. But what occurred was a Monday morning, we came in and there was water on the floor. It was a tile floor, and there was water on the floor, and that's in the server room where there is an HVAC unit that's by itself. Because this was a server room, it is maintained much cooler, so it has this unit in there. The line that the condensation water drains out of was backed up, so we had this flood. Because of that, we noticed some water on the carpet in the room next door. That's when we said we need to call in the LRC Labs, since they were going to be in Holly anyway. Please come and check this out. So they did. They came on eight November, and elevated levels of spores were found in two of the offices. Remediation measures were recommended at that point, and we called in Builder Supply to come in because of the carpet and because of the drywall walls. Unlike the situation at Holly, they came in to provide some remediation, and follow-up testing was performed on fourteen November. Once again, I can tell you that the visual observation, moisture measurements, and air sample results reflect that of a normal indoor fungal ecology at this point, so they were clear. I would like to say that, so that, I'm just updating you on that. I would like to say that Dr. Winborn communicated to the Holly community via phone messages, and the results were posted on the website. So this is in keeping with Dr. McLean's emphasis on transparency. So we tried to act as quickly as we could, taking decisive action, and then also there was a commitment to communicating. And so I want to thank Dr. Winborn for his wordsmithing, as always. He did a terrific job of capturing this and sending this to the community. To that end, I would like to take this opportunity to draw your attention to some of the things that he said. While it is great that they reached the state that they did, let's see, I think he said the, "Most recent round of air quality samples taken November eleventh indicates only slightly altered indoor airborne fungal ecology. This is good news. However, the root cause of these problems is moisture, and this must be addressed if the school's to stay clean for the long term. As we know, part of G C Holly campus is very old. The HVAC plumbing insulation above the ceiling tiles in the main building is compromised. The pipes inside the insulation are also corroding, leaking, and causing intense condensation. Also, there are problems with the roof and the roof edges along the sides of the school." This was included in Dr. Winborn's address. So I just want to clarify what was communicated, that how that HVAC system works is there are pipes that run throughout Holly in the ceiling, the overhead ceiling. Those pipes are insulated with paper wrap. That's the insulation. The pipes themselves are extremely old and literally crumbling. And so we're faced with all these options. We can fix the paper wrapping, the insulation around these antiquated pipes, but then we still have these no-good pipes inside that. And to do that, we did it at Webb. Beautiful job of updated insulation. It's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you still got these rotten pipes inside. So you're not going to do that unless you fix the pipes, and the pipes is another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is just for HVAC water that runs through those pipes. So I say that to you as a segue between our conversations, what you're having this evening. Holly is specifically, I gave you some information on Holly. I gave you a page which is from our master facilities plan. We have a page like that for every school in the county. And I just want you to take a look at what is involved with Holly, that number. There's a column that says Year One. Year One is this year. So you can see, this is what we're looking at, ladies and gentlemen, at this campus. So I wanted to update you with information about air quality. I'm very pleased, we are very fortunate to have a great working relationship with LRC Labs. They do a terrific job, and he comes immediately and takes care of things. We also have a great working relationship with people who help us with remediation that is beyond what our guys can do. We have ordered additional air scrubbers just this month, trying to be on top of this, anticipating. From this point forward, until spring, it should be a relatively quiet time, so we're talking about what do we need to do to add to our inventory to be ready for spring? And that's because the switch over to heat. We have much lower moisture content, so it's a lot better for us. But I just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to speak with you and just provide that segue to our next conversation about facilities. So there's that, and it's a lot to chew on, and there's a lot to walk through, but I just wanted to start that off with you. Yes, Ms. LeBrecht?
So quick, a couple of quick questions. So whenever you talked about Webb, with Webb, did we fix the wrapping and the pipes, or just the wrapping?
We replaced some of the actual plumbing pipes as well that were in bad shape. We didn't just cover up completely failed piping.
All right, and then my other question is, because I know that we had the HVAC issues and mold problems that we had to address with Creedmore Elementary and Wilton, I'm just curious, like, how does that compare what happened at Holly? Like, are we, it's not like the same level, not nearly like that?
Not at all. No, 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 not anywhere.
I mean, still bad, but yeah.
Correct. Not anywhere near that level at all. It was just a concern. We jumped on it right away because it was expressed to us by the staff, and then when the, actually, he took extra samples because it was a little bit different from what he had seen in the spring, and he was just curious, like, where's this coming from? I don't want to get too much in the weeds with it, but I will tell you this, an interesting sort of side note, he noticed on his second visit that there was sort of a science experiment with twenty-one orchid plants in there, and lo and behold, they had spores on them themselves. So I'm not saying that was the cause, for sure, but it contributed. But I do want to be, that's a great question, Ms. LeBrecht, and it was nowhere near the situation that you're thinking about from years ago.
What about flooring?
I'm sorry.
What about underflooring? Any issues with mold there?
No issues with mold on the flooring. No.
And then what about a central office? Like, with that, with those issues, like, what, right, is that the one you're talking, the administrator?
Right, it was fine. I mean, yeah, the remediation came in, it dried out, treated, yes, everything was fine. Again, it's mainly a matter of drying the air, and it's a challenge. Mr. Peace?
Yes, sir. I'm always concerned about the numbers that it's costing, dollar-wise, to remedy all these situations.
Yes, sir.
And you alluded to Year One at Holly, and down in the green on the bottom, it was a couple of million, or one and a half, really, a little more.
Five million, on the second page.
No, I'm talking about this page right now. I haven't gotten to that one yet. But my question has to do with the severity of it, and it sounds like it reached a point where fixing is not the answer to the problem. When I say fixing, I mean removing pipes and...
Correct.
...insulation.
These are hard decisions that we have to make. I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Peace. But one thing I would make clear, we as an executive team discuss the fact that that number that you see, that five million dollars, would make the school usable. It would not make it appear any different. It would still be cinder blocks from the nineteen fifties. It would still be, you know, it would look the same. It wouldn't be sexy or pretty.
Mr. Graham, but that's the old building, right? The one in the front?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Has there been any mold in the newer part?
No, this was on that, this is one hundred hall.
How much does it cost when these people come out and do their inspections and testing? I'm curious.
The inspections that we just did this round of was about thirty-two hundred dollars. And so that was, you know, they did four tests at Holly and a couple at the administrative office.
And that's done monthly?
No, that's a, like, they will bill us, they send us an invoice for when they come and test. So the total for this last round was thirty, about thirty-two hundred dollars.
Do you have any projections as relate to Holly? If we decide we'll keep it open for another two years or so, how much is it going to cost us to do that and have safe air quality? Because, I mean, it sounds like we might need a quick fix, or, when I say a quick fix, I mean for the next school year, maybe? Or can we look down the road further than that?
Yeah, what we're looking at, again, the project, that's for Year One, we're looking at five million, two hundred thousand dollars, you know, to fix it. Now, so let me clarify that, Mr. Peace. That includes, this is all related to HVAC.
Right.
And Holly specifically, for example, the roof is in horrible shape, so around the outside.
Hundred problems, just look down there, right?
Correct.
I mean, maybe, that might be an exaggerated number a little bit, but it doesn't nearly fix what needs fixing.
That number is to fix what needs to be fixed. That number is to fix what needs to be fixed, which includes that roof. See, one of the reasons that there's a moisture problem at the schools is because air comes in from that roof and moisture also around the edges of the facility. So, anyway, I hope I didn't get too far ahead of ourselves, and I was just trying to offer a transition to Dr. Winborn's presentation. Our presentation. Our presentation, we're all in this together. Dr. Winborn is the institutional memory, however.
Question?
Yes.
Just say magically, one of us hit a scratch ticket and had that five million, how quickly could all that be done?
That's also a question, yes.
How quickly could it be done?
It would take some time for, because of supply issues. You know, we've had a lot of difficulty this year trying to get things, we've been trying to do, when I came on board last summer, I was, the first thing that I was informed was we had a catastrophic failure of an air conditioning unit, and I freaked out. I then learned that that's just a phrase, and I calmed down a little bit. That has yet to be addressed. I mean, we have talked to engineers, Duke Power has come out, we've contracted with people, we have purchase orders, we have everything in the works, we are still waiting on the chillers. They have yet to arrive. The latest was, I think, February, as a happy possibility. So, I mean, it's that kind of thing where it's just taken, you know, over a year just because of supply. So, again, I wish I had a crystal ball, you know, like, these folks, to answer your questions about growth, I wish I could answer questions about supply. And, you know, we do have good relationships with a lot of vendors and contractors that we can, that are happy to work with us. I'm thrilled with that. Mr. Clement has terrific relationships, and that really helps. But even at that, you know, Dale Mechanical will get in touch with us, hey, Bill, yeah, we're glad to take care of that, but, and then we have to wait. Well, thank you. I hope, I just wanted to share that we did have this hiccup at both Holly and the administrative offices, it was addressed, and I just, Stan's communication gave me sort of the opportunity to sort of segue into a larger discussion about really our facilities across the districts and how challenging it is to keep everything. You know, I can tell you that Mr. Clement is just beside himself every day trying to keep air quality under control. And he's frustrated about not being able to do other projects because that requires so much of his time. But, you know, that was a directive that he received when he came on board, and he takes it very seriously.
Yes.
So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Your work on this continues to be greatly appreciated by all of us. Thank you for your fast response. Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the point where we're going to have, I think, staff go over some information?
Absolutely. And this presentation is a joint effort, Madam Chairwoman, because we wanted to make certain we didn't drop any balls or mislead anyone just by attaching documents. So you have a lot of documents here, but I'll ask our staff to report to the podium, if you would, and allow us for just a moment to just bring everyone up to speed and take a walk down this historical path so that everyone sort of lands in the same space. And then we're going to step aside so that you all can have your board conversation. Okay? So I'm going to turn it over to the team and insert as a name.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McLean. Hello again, everyone. So as Dr. McLean said, there are a lot of documents on this agenda item. And I will let you know that they pretty much break out into three categories. You'll see, there is, the very top one is titled GCPS Efficiency of School Facility Use and School Reorganization Updated, and it's displayed. This is a document that we created about a year and a half ago, when we came to a point with this discussion of sort of needing to put everything in one place and just kind of help everyone understand and be able to follow all of the work that has been done. And so that's what the three of us are going to go through in just a minute. But also posted on Board Docs, you'll see the final versions of each of the closure/consolidation studies. These were the actual documents that our team created and presented to you as a board. And in most instances, there was feedback provided, and we would bring a second draft to you. And then in some cases, it was even a third round. And then those were, some of them shared with the public at public forums, public meetings, and presented there as well. Also, there are three architect studies, okay? And these are just proposed kind of design concepts that were shared. The board commissioned those, and we spent a lot of money on them. They weren't cheap. So those, we did an RFQ to select the architect, then the architects came, they did a lot of research, they, you know, looked at all of the schematics for the schools, and then developed these sort of cost estimates based on what the board wanted them to consider at that time. And then you'll see there's one document called the North Carolina State University IPSEC Study, and that's the Integrated Plan Something-Something acronym. But basically, what they did in 2018 was an overall feasibility of how much the county is growing and what are the needs of the school district. And this is a service that they provide. We did another one in like 2015, I think, and there was one in 2011. Some of the information that was done in those previous IPSEC studies helped inform the board about whether or not to build Tar River, about the construction of Granville Central, and so on. So anyway, that's there. Lots of information for you. This document that we're going to share with you now, again, is sort of like a nice summary. You can see the table of contents. We talk about just efficiency in general. We talk about the challenges that we're facing, some of the potential solutions that the board has considered, a reminder of the legal requirements, which Ms. Dubison keeps us straight on, and then the appendices. And one of the things that we're really relieved to have in there is a detailed timeline, you know, board meeting by board meeting, every single one of the actions that you and your predecessors took over the past four years. So, a lot to digest and go through. But we're going to, we're going to kind of hit the high points. Just stop us if you have any questions. We're going to sort of informally take turns talking about different parts of this as it relates to our areas. So there'll just be some back and forth in exchange. But informal, we're in a work session today. So again, just say, oh, hold up, and we'll stop and try to get through it together. All right? Thank you. Next slide, please, Russ. Okay, so, as an overview, generally, one of the big takeaways here, some of this will be obvious, I believe, but how efficient our schools are makes a huge difference on how we operate. The state funds us based on the number of children that we have enrolled. Doesn't care how many buildings we have. Okay? So that very simple premise right there has a tremendous impact on how we're able to operate and how we use our money. The more inefficient we are, the worse it is for our children. Bottom line. Bottom line. And as you will see throughout this presentation, the data shows that right now we are not efficient at all. Therefore, you know, this is why we're here. You guys have all spent so much time and energy and brain power working on this problem, and you've done a lot to address it already. But that's why it's so important. We show some examples and kind of talk through, you know, how formulas and capacity are determined on page two. We talk about how schools are being used, you know? It's not necessarily just a straightforward, simple formula. There are several different ways in which capacity can be measured. You'll see in the data that's in this report and that we frequently reference, we talk about optimal capacity. We know that there's a maximum number of children that you can squeeze into a school building, right? But we also know that there are best practices and ways to use that space. And so we rest our hats on the optimal capacity figures. And those came from a lot of hard work from Bill's team and others over the past several years of physically going to each school and looking in every single space, classifying how it could be used, and then calculating that. So very deliberate. So, you know, when you think about that capacity and, you know, what the percentage looks like for a building, just know that the one that we like to focus on is optimal. We can, of course, look at DPI. We have to report every five years, our facility use statistics, and we submit that, but they have their own formulas, so it spits out usually a different number. So, you know, if you do get these questions like, well, why are your numbers different than DPI's? Well, it's because we take an approach that is probably, in my opinion, more student-friendly. An example that Bill and I talked about, Northern Granville Middle School is an example. There's a new wing, did you want to talk about that real quick, Bill? Just explain how that works?
Sure. Thank you, Stan. So, for example, the new wing at Northern Granville Middle School, there is science, a beautiful science lab, but there's also a classroom. So are we going to count that as taking, what, 25 for middle school, you know, roughly? 25 kids, 27 kids? Or is that going to be 52, 54 kids? You know, in terms of determining capacity. And, you know, we decided that that can be used, you know, that's, those are two classrooms that they can be used, but we're using one because it's what, it's good for kids, you know? So, that's just an example. Does that help? Or does it confuse you more? Okay. It's that kind of thing, but those are the choices that we have to make in when we make these determinations about optimal versus absolute capacity. You know, absolute, how many can you cram in there? And we're saying, yeah, well, it's optimal, but we use it differently. So I hope that illustrates it. Thanks, Stan.
Yeah, those of you that follow what goes on in Wake County, you know, like, you'll hear that some of their schools are at 110% capacity or 120% capacity, and, you know, they might have modular units, but what they also do is have their electives on carts. And so they go around, and when their teacher has the planning period, teacher leaves, and then the art teacher comes in with her cart and teaches, you know, it makes it difficult, you know? It's not the same experience. All right. So, the next, any questions? Don't want to talk over anybody. Stop us if we're getting, going too fast. All right, the next couple of pages talk about our growth over time and the number of students that go off to charter schools, that's on page five. There's a list here. Vicki, did you want to maybe talk a little bit about this and just sort of what's going on with our most recent enrollment figures, too?
Absolutely, absolutely. On the next page of the presentation, you see that this is our current charter school enrollment based on PMR I, that's that first month of enrollment. Note that our, in our total, now, I have to say, this is, this is the day before we got the final numbers for the new Wake Prep preparatory school. This total says 1,925, however, with our Wake Prep numbers, our total charter school enrollment is up to 2,058. That's another, another handful of kids, handful of kids. So, and that's a high number for us, that has gotten up there. And also, hot off the presses, you know, I mentioned earlier, budget, for budget purposes, that we're waiting for some last, you know, the last-minute information from DPI to work on our budget. I got a little sneak peek, on Friday, they sent us our new and growing charter school reduction. And that is based on our new charter school, Wake Prep, and, of course, growth in other charter schools. And so we've had a reduction of 140 students, according to their calculation. And that translates into approximately, noting that some of these are positions, so approximates, and some of these are dollar funds, it equates to approximately $656,000 that we're losing.
$656,000.
$656,000 out of our budget for 140 children.
And that's for the Wake Prep?
Wake Prep. Wake Prep, and probably, you know, a few from other schools as well.
Vicki, will you take that conversation, though, a little bit further?
Sure.
Based on what we discussed this morning?
Trying to read your mind right now.
While we lost 140 children at the same time.
Absolutely. We have been looking at those numbers, and in some of the enrollment numbers we've looked at, we know that our 20-day membership from last year compared to this year, we lost 85 children. And we've known this for a while, once we got our 20-day numbers. So we were expecting, you know, right around that amount for Wake Prep, but those numbers came in at 140, which means we lost 140 students, approximately, to Wake Prep. But that means our enrollments come, we've had some new enrollments as well. So there's some balancing that's coming out, and we're just going to continue to watch that moving forward.
Does that, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes.
Question. How much money does that equate to going out of our budget to charters?
I'm sorry, can you say?
How much, how much money does that equate to going out of our budget to charters? They, what is it, 2,000 and something?
It is approximately that. It changes every month now, because we have to recalculate that every month.
So you can give me approximately how much money?
I'm going to do math in my head really fast, which is a scary thought. It is approximately 2,000, you're right. And so we had 130-ish children go to Wake Prep, if that's what you're asking for, so 100, somebody do that for me, please, 130 times 2,000, that's 200, 2, what, 26,000? 2,600? Oh, my gosh.
You're asking how much of our total budget?
How much, what's the funding per pupil that we have for children, wherever they are? Is it the same amount, right?
Yes, yes, it is. And the difficulty with the calculating for charter schools right now is because we do have to recalculate that every month, based on our current. Right at this moment, based on our calculation today, it, the calculation for nine months is $233 and some change per child, per month, for nine months.
Okay.
For, out of our local funding. That doesn't speak to our state, you know, the state funding. That's just our local funding.
Okay. Thank you.
So, quick question. Is this on, can you just read? Anyways, so you said that it's a loss of $656,000, that 2,000 times the 140 is this $280,000. So I know you're saying that that's the local fund. Is the difference between the 656 and the 280, is that the state funding that we're entering? Or was the difference in the?
We're actually looking at two completely different funds. The funds that we send to charter schools, that's purely local funds. The budget that we just recently got was fully state funds.
So is that 2,000 per student on top of the 656 that we'd be losing?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes.
Lot of money.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Another way to think about it is... Another way to think about it is if you look at the, if you'll scroll up one to a previous page there. The yellow are the students we're losing. That's the portion, portion of our budget that we're losing as well. So we're approaching the 20% mark. We exceeded the 20% mark.
So when we look at the amount, if someone is looking at the county budget and how much is going to Granville County Public Schools, that amount is going to include the charter kits. And it passes through, just so everyone understands.
Absolutely. That is, that is definitely the, the case. And, and you can see, you know, in 2022, that breakdown, all of our funds that we receive from the county, we really have to think of it, that's broken down per student. That's where we get that per people expenditure. And those county funds pay for every student who lives in Granville County, not just Granville County Schools students, but every Granville County student, charter schools and public
And the only control we have off that, over that particular money that goes with them is sending the check, correct?
Correct.
Not to belabor the point, but if you go to the next page again, you know, we often think about the charters as the ones that are right here in Granville, but we send them to 30-odd charters, some of them very far away. And many of these students have never come to us before.
Right.
So split it to, they live in Granville County, but we send a check through our education system?
They are a resident of Granville County, and they start school for their first time ever in kindergarten at a charter school. They've never been through our schools, but we're going to send them the money. Because they are a resident, they reside in our county.
Oh, their parents, they was, they still live here. That's one thing, I was home, so getting back to another point here, all the homes that will be built in Granville County, I guess, the next five or 10 years here, I'm almost afraid it's going to happen again. I mean, they could, could very well live here, but drive a kid out someplace else as well. So we may get, get, or enforce a kid, they may not, there's not, no more regular, regular data.
It's a possibility. And many of these charters are in Durham, Wake, you know, other surrounding counties.
Quick question.
Yes, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. And, and, you know, I've heard what you have said before. Good evening to everybody. But with regards to that, you know, the decision that's being made whether if the, the residents of Granville County have never had a child in the school system, and they put them in a charter school somewhere else, just like you're saying, everywhere, has that ever been a question up at the higher level? And that decision is being made at the state level? Has it been questioned?
I think that's probably been debated at the policy state level. But it is certainly within the rights of, of parents to, to do that, to make that choice.
There, there have been
Yes.
Those concerns raised at the, with the board of directors at the School Board Association and our legislators, or people that work in the legislature generally take those questions to the legislatures. And so they are aware of how the money they send, where it goes, and who's, who's affected by it. So the question is, are they really thinking about it?
What do you, yeah. And, and, you know, your knowledge of that and have set into some of these discussions, what do you consider to be the, the, I shouldn't say attitude, what do you think? I mean, everybody is totally fine with that?
There are people that make the rules, are. When I say rules, I mean legislators. And, well, I won't go there. But anyway, yeah.
And, and the general concept is that this is local county money, and that it should be supporting all students in the county. And that, and that is the philosophy behind that. And it's just that the school district has to be the pass-through for that funding as well.
I have a question that relates to virtual. I know we have a couple of virtual charter, virtual schools in state. Does people that go to those schools get the same money followed them as it do for?
They do not, actually. They are capped at, I believe, if I, I'm looking at my spreadsheet, I believe it's right around $87, $88 per month for nine months, that they're capped.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to the next slide. It's about school capacity that we referenced earlier. And I'll turn it over to Bill. With just one little thing I'd like for everyone to look at first. One, two, three, four, five columns over, bottom row, overall, 63% capacity. 63%. Thank you, Dr. Winborn. So that speaks to what Dr. Winborn referenced earlier about, you know, as a district, how we're doing with capacity. This is very helpful in taking a look at where each school is in terms of its capacity. We have three schools that are in the 70% range. Everybody else is less. We have one school that's less than 50%. It's a pretty startling numbers to consider when you take a look at how the building's being used. If I can make one comment regarding capacity and square footage as it pertains, you know, this is a difficult topic, obviously, we're talking about. But as it pertains to maintaining this campus, for example, when it was a relatively full middle school, there were, I think, three, maybe four custodians. Square footage has not changed. How the building is being used has changed significantly. But it's, like, offices are being used on every hallway, there are students here, there is one custodian here for this entire campus now. So it's, these, these are difficult decisions that we make about how, how this affects us. But I would like to draw your attention under the capacity to some of the areas that are, you know, a lot in the 50s. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Yes, Ms. Winborn?
Do we have a cap on how many can be enrolled in Granville Academy?
I don't think we have a cap.
A cap?
No.
No?
No, there is an enrollment process. There is a process for enrollment, but no cap.
Granville Early College is the only one that has a?
Early College because of space. We don't have any more classrooms.
There's, there's a cap on early college because of the space. Exactly. What, what's not included, this is a great visual, I think. I think it's a really powerful one. What's not included is the year that the facility was built. So I added that to the side, and I will be sending that to you.
Get that later.
Yes. We'll, we'll take a look at that a little bit later.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah. We have some interesting dates. So any, any questions about capacity?
In the bottom row of the percentages did include the pre-K classes, correct?
Yes, ma'am. All right. We're going to keep moving along. Again, there's another section here, which I referenced earlier, about our five-year requirement to report these statistics to DPI. And so that information is there for you as well, just as a reference. Down to page 11 talks about the solutions. And of course, this is your work. It's, it's, we're not here tonight to make any recommendations or endorse any, any of these ideas. This is, this is the board's task. We, we gave sort of a, a brief summary of, of what has been accomplished thus far in this table on 11 and 12. But if you'll scroll on down, I, I will stop and note, Appendix E has the entire timeline of, you know, start until the, the most recent actions that have been taken. So that's at the end. And we won't go through all that tonight because it could take, it could take hours to go through it. But all, most of the, the, the votes and everything are in there. You can see them. But if you'll scroll down to page 12, right there, these are the savings that have been achieved thus far from, from the board's work. You've got your annual recurring savings from the closure of JF Webb School of Health and Life Sciences, the closure of Joe Toller Oak Hill, and the closure of Mary Potter. Then you've got, of course, the one-time proceeds from the sale of real properties that we've, that we've made. It's important to note, though, that these recurring savings, we, we may not still be realizing those. You know, it's been a while since we've closed Toller. A lot of those students initially went to Stovall, and, and that population was up to over 500 students. That dropped back down. So we may have, we may have lost a few of them over time. But those were the projected annual recurring savings at the time of the closure. We have taken, if you'll scroll to the next page, future strategies. These are the potential annual recurring savings based on the studies. So these numbers were pulled from the individual studies. These are the ones that are still on the table that the board had, has commissioned, that, you know, you had us create for you. So those, those information, pieces of information are there for you in a single table. Then we've also pulled from Mr. Graham's work, the master facility plan. He showed you the, the spreadsheet just for Holly. There's one of those for every campus. And of the, again, of the schools that are being considered, those are the outstanding maintenance costs that are due now. Those aren't in the future. Those are as of today.
And caveat?
Yeah. One thing I'd like to add, Stan, to that, and that, the question came up in discussing these about, are these funds set aside? You know, we have a master's facility plan that says this is how much is needed for this school. And so the question is, you know, so are the, is that funding set aside? The answer is no, it's not set aside. That's, we know how much is needed for that particular school in the future. But our capital funding is pretty much the same. It's, you know, a little over a million dollars a year that we receive from the commissioners. And so we have to make do with that and, and plan accordingly, the best that we can. So I just wanted to point that out. Just because you see, you know, two years from now, there's going to be a lot of expenditures at a particular school, it doesn't mean that, okay, we have set aside that funding for that school. We're, as I said earlier, unfortunately, a lot of our capital funding is spent on our continual problems that we have, you know? Maintenance. I hope that is helpful. Sorry. Then the next page, page 14, the architectural studies, those three that were commissioned, those are just summaries of the total estimated cost. Of course, if you look in those studies, you can see the details of how those are broken down. Not all of these costs are necessarily mandatory to do what you might want to do with these facilities. They were, some of them included alternate, you know, ideas or additional components. So then the next page, page 15, talks about Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Please.
While we're still talking about those costs of the, of, of the different plans, I do want to, because I don't believe it's in this presentation, I do want to put our minds back to some of those big warning lights that had been in our budget the last for, for '21, '22. Remember that we have a goal of reducing our spending by about 1.5 million because we have those staff positions that are being funded through expiring ESAR dollars. And we budgeted for a portion of our, our fund balance in '21, '22. And that total was approximately 1.5 million. So that's in the back of our minds of funding that we need to, to come up with in some way. I just wanted to put that out there.
And so that was for operating costs, right?
Operating.
Operating costs. And these, what we're looking at here are facility. So the next couple of pages just talk about the potential solutions, and you guys have, have discussed this, but it just sort of lays it out in simple terms. There are three choices, really. You can just simply do nothing and keep status quo. There's some pros and cons listed with each of that. There are some temporary actions that can be taken. Most of those don't involve the sale of any property at all. You know, if you do make some decisions, you know, keep the property. You know, that does provide you another set of options. And then, of course, take some permanent actions, which would involve making closures or reorganizations and then selling that property. So I won't go through all of these, but you can see them. And many of you touch on these when you, when you make your deliberations. Of course, the legal reminders are there, and then the appendices. So we're happy to answer any questions you have, or just sit down and get out of the way.
So I have a capacity question. Is there any, like, best practices about what an ideal operating capacity is? Because obviously, we don't want a school operating at 100% capacity at all times, right? But 60% is also not great. So like 80, 85?
Well, I, I would argue that the optimal capacity, the way we've got it, is 100%.
100%? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that is, that's the most efficient. Now, I think you're going to have some folks, especially the support services, where the space is going to get a little tight. But from the student's perspective, not the adult's perspective, but from the student's perspective, 100% optimal capacity is where we want to be.
Okay.
And, and as a board, that would be the wisest use of our funds.
Right.
But that optimal capacity is not excellent.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Let's let Bill say that in the microphone, so everyone can gain an understanding.
I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Frederick, but I think Stan is referring to, we want to have 100% of what we decided was optimal capacity.
Right.
Which is less than
Right.
What the state says is maximum capacity. And I believe your question was, what is the sweet spot?
Yeah.
And that's a guess.
Thank you for that.
So I have a quick question before we continue on. I know that, like, based on our last meeting, we, you talked about, like, the staffing shortages amongst the elementary, middle school, and all that kind of stuff. And I noticed one of the things that was in here was talking about moving Holly to Creedmore Elementary and how that was kind of an idea that was turned around even before my time and all that kind of stuff. But my question is, I guess, even if you were to move Holly to Creedmore's campus and kept it the size, you know, the size that Holly is currently, is that really, how, how does that alleviate any of the, the staffing shortages that we currently face? Or does it at all?
Well, I don't believe that it would impact the staffing shortage that we currently face at Holly, because you'd simply be moving it.
Right. But I mean, would it make it, like, would it help to alleviate the staffing issues that we have?
It, it would not for Holly. But moving it to Creedmore would assume, I guess, that Creedmore would be closed, right?
Yes.
So having one less elementary school would spread the same number of elementary students over fewer campuses, which could increase your efficiency.
On the elementary level.
On the elementary level.
My question is the middle school level. Is that going to help at all?
I don't believe so, because you simply
Because that's where we're having the most negative impact as far as, like, not negative impact, but the most issues with staffing shortages is on the middle school level.
Right. I think where, where we start to see a gain with our, you know, a net benefit to our staffing shortage is when you consolidate schools. You have fewer of that great span of schools.
So, quick math, real quick. I mean, if we I mean, if we, I don't know if this is a conversation for now with you guys or just whatever, but, I mean, Creedmore Elementary, if we remove those 307 currently enrolled and distribute that, that's like 45 students that go to each of the different elementary schools. That's approximately eight to 10% depending on what all of those are. So you can add that to the number. That would jump most of them to the low 60s or to the mid 70s. That's a huge improvement. If we just consolidate Holly, that would put North Granville Middle at 85% and Butner STEM at 93%, which are much better numbers.
Would you repeat that last part about more than Granville?
Uh, yeah. So if you just take Holly Middle's 489 students out, just, I just evenly divided it by two and added it to the currently enrolled in the other two, that would put North Granville Middle at 85% capacity and Butner STEM at 93%.
That's accurate. He's dispersing.
Yeah, I'm just dispersing. I'm just taking the one number and cutting it in half. Yeah.
I was just thinking about distance.
Yeah. I mean, like practically, that's a whole nother situation, right? But like numerically, it would make it a lot better. Yeah.
And so to your question, Ms. LeBrecht, that would take care of the staffing? By, by doing what you're talking about? If you're, because you're removing vacancies.
Yeah. So like as again, ballpark numbers, if two elementary schools were consolidated, that would be approximately 20% added onto all the other percentages in the elementary column. Which again, practically, like logistically, whole nother conversation, but like practically, mathematically, based on, you know, butts and seats. I mean, that would be kind of what we're looking for. That'd be 80s to 90s percentages.
All right. So, Madam Chairwoman, I'm going to ask my team, thank you so very much. We appreciate the data and information. We're certainly here to answer questions. But we're going to kind of step aside and let you have your conversations.
That's fine.
As I said, I think we've gotten a lot of good information on potential growth. Don't think we'll see all of it next year, obviously. I think we have to think about the situation at Holly, not only as financial, but as, you know, wanting to have the safest environmental situation for our children. I challenge us to, I'll do a lot of thought and as we do this, I think we will probably have a lot more questions for our staff. Because when you start with transportation and when you start with all, all kinds of other issues, then you have questions come up. So that's my feeling right now is that we need to digest, think, and maybe I'll come back with some good ideas on how we might make this work.
I do have one quick question actually that was brought up at one point like way a while ago. But what are the longest bus routes that we're dealing with currently from like in our middle schools and that sort of thing? Do we have the, do we know?
I want to say roughly two hours.
Two hours for which middle schools? Each of them?
I think Northern Granville was shorter. But the other two schools, Holly has some that are possibly.
What did you say about Holly's longest ride right now?
Two hours.
Maybe two hours. I'm not, I'm not sure. I know that the, our longest bus routes across the district are roughly two hours. Yeah, I'm happy to, yes.
That would be good information.
I'm absolutely happy to bring that to you.
Great.
Absolutely.
We'll just send it to everybody.
Mr. Graham, is that based on like a bus drive? Just y'all made the routes longer now?
Not necessarily. No.
I think some information we need from the towns that might be helpful, list, from listening to the people with the city planning and county planning and stuff, is kind of what kind of population forecast do we get once it's locked in stone? I mean, like, do we have a hard committed development that's a year out so we can plan around 900 homes or something? Like, is it a three-year window of time that we have a lot of like consistent information on? Because a lot of, some of these things are just speculation that we're optimistic that there's going to be 10,000 extra homes that show up or whatever. But whatever window of time we have pretty consistent forecasting, I think will help us figure out how we can strategically have these conversations and stuff over the next, soon.
Well, I think the Oxford presentation probably gave us a little more concrete because they're further along. You ride by them, I ride by them when I go to Wilton. And they're regularly putting in gutter and all that type of stuff. So I have heard that they're going to be ready by the spring to start selling. So I think my guess is that we're going to see something in Oxford fairly quick. Sounds like Butner could be two to three years and who knows about the-
Do you know which, was that the blue or was that the green that she was?
Green's in approval, blue's in construction.
Is construction. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Is like green the approval phase? I mean, I'd love to know what like that looks like. I mean, does that mean it's two years out? Is that 12 months? I have no idea. Yeah.
One of, one of the questions that we are going to have to answer is, excuse me, is whether we are going to, whether we need to do something before all of these developments, any of them is done, which means that are we going to decide to do something in the next year or so? And if we do, we're going to have to make decisions based on what's on the ground and now. Or if we're going, if we can wait until we have an, an idea or know when the population is going to increase and what that's going to do as far as what we need to do as a system. Right now, I think based on what we see, or what I see with Holly, we, we can't wait another couple of years before we make some decisions about that. So I think as we get into looking at the information that we have and compare it to what we need to do in the near future, we're going to have to not rely on any of that information that's good to have for two, three years from now. But for next year or sooner, we gotta decide and make some decisions based on what we have and what we know we can do and how it's going to affect the funding that we're going to have to do it with. I mean, that's, that's sort of my bottom line in this is, I mean, we can talk about these developments and of course, it's great to have, have them coming. But until they're here and up and running, this school system still has to function.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think something that's important is for us to get this, taking-
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ethel.
No, no, no. You could go right ahead, but you know, I, I agree with both of you all. It's, it's, what we're saying here is, you know, yes, we see something coming down the pike as far as growth, but it's still on the table, like when I first came on board with regards to the 10 million to fix up, you know, Holly and our budget isn't getting any larger, you know. So yes, we are going to have to make those tough decisions. Oh, we look for the growth, but right now, we don't have the budgets to keep things as they are. Hard decisions for sure. Thanks.
Yeah. I think in my opinion, these need to be shored up sooner than later because if the, a lot of the issues that we've all communicated recently, if these don't get shored up when the growth happens, there's just going to be more attraction to the charter schools or other options instead of the public schools here in Granville County. So I think that needs to be laid out and repaired as a foundation so that when the growth happens, I mean, it needs to be attractive enough that we get the opportunity to expand and earn their trust and all that kind of stuff. That's my opinion on it, is that I think we need to work on this sooner than later.
I think what the growth patterns tell us right now is that for the very immediate future, we do need to do something. It also tells me, my thinking is, we certainly don't need to sell anything right now. We need to hold on to our properties because it is coming. And it may come quicker than we think or it may come slower. We don't know. We don't have a crystal ball. But we have to do something with the kids at Holly and provide them a good situation. And I don't see spending a lot of money fixing Holly when we know that's not what we need to do long-term.
And as a business owner, I see that projected growth as like an insulated investment. If we know pretty consistently that eight to 10 years from now, that, you know, we're going to have that increased opportunity for, you know, students, giving them the opportunity for their education, but then budget-wise, us having an optimistic increased budget, if we earn that by having quality facilities and lay out the groundwork now, such that five years from now, when that happens, it's going to be a very different landscape for all the kids that come in at that time.
I mean, I, I do want to, I feel like a lot of the stuff that we've discussed, we had the temporary solution that I threw out as well as the permanent solution that Mr. Peace had discussed. And I think it would also be worthwhile to just kind of, you know, make sure that those are also distributed to, to the new members as well so that everybody has, you know, kind of every, like, you know, those things also-
And there may be some other things in the middle.
Right. No, and I'm not, I'm not trying to throw one thing out there. I'm just saying like, you know, obviously, since we have a fresh set of eyes, like I think throwing out some of the ideas that we've had already so that y'all can say, you know, oh, this is good from this one. Have we thought about moving this to that? So that, I mean, obviously, you know, it can be more of a collaborative effort and, and really trying to get the best solution out there. Because there's obviously probably stuff that we still even haven't thought of, so.
Let, let me just say, a year ago, a little bit longer than that, I had a permanent solution. But, you know, today as I sit here, we might, I mean, I, I don't see our system having a permanent solution for a long time. So I think whatever we do, we can't project that it's going to be 10 years or five years or 15 years down the road. And I'm not, I don't think it might change a lot, but I don't think we need to look at what we do now as a permanent fix for anything. That's just what I feel about the work I've done thus far.
Well, thinking, as something just to think about or chew on, because Dr. Frederick brought up some very interesting numbers and it made me think that one of the things, I guess, moving forward, probably just need to set a threshold or capacity target. I like the idea of trying to get up to about 80%, you know, capacity on some of the schools, especially the elementary level. I, I would say you should look at to maybe consolidating two of the elementary schools, probably Creedmore and Wilton. Maybe then turn Creedmore's campus into the middle school. It would be right next to the high school to take advantage of the track and the other facilities. It would also be close enough to get back to Holly if you needed to use the field football or baseball or softball or whatever. It would also address the whole transportation issue because you really wouldn't be changing the footprint. Some of the kids now at Holly ride the bus with some of the kids from South Granville. They get on the same bus. Also, and the, the last thing here is, the last two points. If you were to consolidate Creedmore and Wilton, I would mothball Wilton and hold on to it. In case that growth continues to come in the southeastern corner, that gives us some wiggle room if you need to open it back up or to use it once growth explodes. And looking at the, the numbers, Bill was talking about about $5 million to repair Holly. And it looks like, based on these last numbers, it was about $5 million and some change to convert Creedmore to a middle school. So if you're going to spend five, you got to spend it anyway. Either you're going to spend five and patch up Holly, or you can spend the five and turn Creedmore into a middle school.
Well, one of the things that you mentioned for Holly, no, for Creedmore, there was a gymnasium in that $5 million you're talking about, which was 3 million bucks. And if we, I mean, I don't see building a gymnasium at Creedmore Elementary because at some point, we're going to need to have another middle school anyway. And, and we, we, I'm sort of getting ahead of what we just talked about, but I, I don't think it would be feasible if we went that route to actually build a gym, a gymnasium for a middle school at that site.
Well, then the other thing to consider too is, I mean, in general, construction costs have gone up 30%. So really, we're not looking at $5 million at this point. We're looking at $8 million, most likely in renovation costs.
The workshop I went to with the needs-based assessment, they said that by the time they got their project approved and based on what they had estimated, it had gone up about 15% is what they were looking at. And that was last year.
Okay. So then like 6.5 then?
Right. Another possibility in looking at the numbers, and Creedmore is a little bit smaller than say Butner STEM, the numbers, if you want to have a little room for growth there, there's some thought to give to having a K8 academy at Wilton and possibly one in the southern end. We have a lot of parents that say they do not want to go to middle school. And that could possibly be a route we could take to maybe retain more students and attract more students. So that's a possibility too.
It sounds like everybody's in the opinion, we got to do something about Holly.
The idea of the K8, I do like it and I'm not, you know, poo-pooing it. But knowing what's in the hiring pool right now, if you go K8, now you got to go out and you got to hire some middle school teachers. And we can't currently fill the middle school positions that we have open. So you'd be creating an opportunity or you'd be creating an issue where you have to try to hire some more folk.
We can look at that and see how that might work.
Yeah. And about the gym, I agree. I wouldn't spend the money trying to build a gym at Creedmore if this is something not a permanent fix because South Granville has two gyms. And then we also have the new community center across the street. Maybe there could be some conversation or to work out something with Parks and Rec if they need to play games or something like that. But yeah, maybe that would save money by not building the gym and just using what we currently have access to.
I don't want to interrupt, but Dr. Winburne, it might be helpful just to, since we have some new board members, the licenser issue that we've talked about before, that teachers need a different license to teach grade seven and eight than they do K5. And so that's why you can put them together in one building, but they can't necessarily share teachers for every class.
You mean seven, eight versus K8 or seven?
So, middle school licensure is for six, seven, eight. Elementary licensure is for K through six?
Yes.
So they can, either can teach six.
They can teach six.
Yeah.
Right.
So it doesn't mean you can't have K8 or K12. It just means the teachers wouldn't be doing both.
That is correct. And Mr. Perry sends his regrets for not being able to be here tonight. I'm sure he would have jumped on that. But it, it just, to Dr. McKnight's point, makes it a little more challenging to staff because you're looking at an additional pool of certified teachers for a narrower scope of teaching.
Well, it seems like the HR department have enough problems without us adding to it. I'm sure if Mr. Perry was here, he would agree to that.
Yeah, I bet he would. Back to what we were saying earlier, I, I agree. I think we're to the point now where we, we're at the point now where we need to look at consolidating two elementary schools. I think that would open up opportunities to address Holly, the whole middle school issue. I don't know what to do about the high school.
I think, I think my, well, I, I don't disagree.
I do. Nothing.
I, I don't disagree at all with what you've said. I do think that what I, what concerns me is that we're going to address issues at the elementary school, but yet we've, like I just, it really concerns me the numbers that we saw with our staffing at our middle, middle school level. And what I don't want to see is for us to say, well, we closed two schools, but then leave the middle schools alone. And then we're, you know, like our HR department is still having issues with that and we're underserving those students. So I just, I really want to make sure that we're not focusing too much on the elementary school and then ignoring the middle school.
We also need to keep in mind when we close any of our schools, they are choice schools and some schools are chosen by a large number and we might see a loss of students that would be significant, which would offset savings. So we have to look at that as well.
Just to throw this out, I'm going to ask, what would be the-
Just a statement, would we?
The disadvantage of, because we're trying to increase efficiency. If we could move early college onto one of the high school campuses, that's under capacity. Could, would that help? It's a choice school and I know Webb is already like under 50% capacity. Could early college fit at one of those or what's the, what am I missing? What's the whole?
Dr. McLean?
So the children have to take their college courses?
That's what the BIS-
Those are the one that fans from Granville would be calling.
And is that a condition that they have to be on campus there or?
They do it because that's where the professors are?
Okay.
And those professors don't come to us.
Right.
And right now, they just walk across the street really to get there.
Gotcha. I knew it was something I was missing. That sounded too easy.
Did you have something, Ms. Anderson? Did you have something, Ms. Anderson, that you wanted to say?
Well, a great conversation, and one thing I wanted to mention, you know, and of course, we keep talking about closing, where the word consolidation just gives it a new life because, you know, you have parents that's, you know, close, close, consolidate. We have great folks at both and be able to pick up some of those extra choices that we were just talking about with the consolidation versus, you know, one school is closing. No, it's not, we're consolidating, we're growing together, we're consolidating. Keep it on the positive side, thank you.
I agree, the consolidation piece, we're also on the clock because federal dollars run out in 2024. And we've got this hole, and if you don't make a decision, we're gonna have to lay some people off. And that's just gonna be the hard truth. So if we can kind of avoid that now by consolidating and then you lose people with attrition and retirements and stuff anyway, I, I think that would help us down the road. But if we take no action, in 2024, somebody's gotta get a pink slip. And that's gonna hurt.
Between the time we leave this meeting and come back next month, we, I think it would be to our advantage to give a lot of thought to being able to, as individuals, have a discussion about what we would like to see happen as individuals initially. Because once that's done, we can probably get to a place where we can all live with before, you know, a year from now. I mean, we, we have, we have to make that decision needs to be made around how soon we need to do what's, what we need to do that's different from what we are now. Because, you know, when it's time for budget, we need to have made some decisions about where, how we're going to move forward. And I think when we sit at this table that for the next meeting, everybody should have some idea based on what we know, what we've heard tonight, and think about it in terms of, well, I think about, it thinks in terms of what's best for children before I think about how we're gonna pay for it. And of course, most of the time, we don't get all the way there because we can't afford to pay for it. But at least for me, it's where we need to start. And let, no, we, I'm not gonna put that on you, but we, we really need to look at what's best for children initially. And then we can talk about, you know, schools, how full they are with percentages of capacity they are, and then work backwards from, from that point. But I, I would hate to leave this meeting thinking that we are going to come back the next meeting and have, and just have the conversation we're having tonight and not do anything other than that.
I think that's a great idea, we all come back with something and then we'll go from there.
It's Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I, I was gonna say the same thing. I think that it's a, that's a great idea, Mr. Peace, because I, I don't, I, I'm sure that everybody could come back with at least one or two options, that you've thought about yourself, that you're looking for what's in the best interest of our children and bring at least from your, from our discussions this evening and from all the documentation we've been listening to from Dr. Winborn and others, and come back with, hey, here are my two options. Hey, here are my two options. And I really think that, you know, we will, might just be surprised at some options that are very, very close. But bring it, you know, give it your best thought process, what's in the best interest of our children.
I suspect most of us are gonna have a question that will come up about this, that, or the other. Will our staff, how should we direct our questions? We don't want to make life tough for you folks, but if you have a question about capacity, curriculum, anything pertaining to this, we'll send it to Dr. McLean and she'll get answers out. Okay.
So timeline wise then, so we're, we're talking about the next meeting and we don't usually have a work session in December, so, right.
Well, it's one on the, on calendar for right now.
December nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
I say if we need one, we do it.
I agree.
I think it's too important not to. We do not need to keep people guessing on what's gonna happen next year.
Right.
We need to get it done quicker rather than later.
No, and I'm, I'm totally for that, I was, yeah, yes, absolutely.
If that's all, I guess we can get a motion to go into. All right, let me, let's get the motion here, let me get my glasses on. Do I have a motion to go into closed session to, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, three one eight eleven, A six, one four three, three eighteen eleven, A three, one four three, three eighteen eleven, A five, and section one, one five C, three two one, for personnel and attorney-client privilege?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Aye.
Oh God, here it comes.
Okay, we're back from, we're now in open session. Just had some reminders for dates. If anybody needs reminding, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are Thanksgiving break. Okay, we have our December fifth Board of Education regular meeting here at the Mary Potter Center, six P M. We have on December fourteenth, Holiday Social with our county commissioners at Central Office at three P M. And December nineteenth is a Board of Education work session. I think we kind of agreed that even though it would be nice to skip it, we have a lot to do and we'll go ahead with that. I know there are lots of student programs going on throughout December, so some of us are getting invitations and some of it's on the website, so hopefully we can all get to a few of them and support our kids. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.